Is your recorder on?
Yes, it is.
All right. 10:31 a.m. This is the Bluff Town Council Work Sessions. Today is Tuesday, August 8, 2023. Roll call?
Linda Sosa.
June Sayers.
Luann Hook.
Brian Murray.
Ann Lepinen.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
All right. Then the first order of business is the discussion of the master fee schedule and the proposed resolution that's scheduled for hearing this evening. So there was a resolution that our attorney did with the master fee schedule. And then, I want to tell everyone, is kind of an amended fee schedule that's two pages and has some of the blanks filled in. And those blanks were there pending answers from our attorney on some questions. So does everyone have the document, proposed master fee schedule? I can't tell. Does every... Brandt, go ahead.
I don't have a copy of that. I couldn't get it into my schedule. So we can talk about it. If Erin can put it up, whatever. I do not have that copy.
Okay.
Erin, I'm still having struggles reaching my email when I'm not on the town computer. Is it office dot outlook dot com?
I think it's outlook dot office dot com.
Okay.
And thanks, Erin, for sharing on this.
Thank you, Erin.
So what you'll see is that in the ordinance draft that Chris McAnany did under land use fees in the ordinance, we just had highlighted number nine, variance application, number 10 zoning text amendment, number 14 annexation and disconnect. And then under airport on page two of the resolution was the hangar rental. And so those were filled in after a conversation by... with Chris. I know that we wanted to be clear that only one... whether one fee would apply or multiple fees. And so we're... somebody's applying for variance or someone's applying for boundary adjustment, any of those really from eight through 13. We'd only... we can pick if we want to have multiple fees apply. But generally, the rule would be we would use the highest fee that's applicable to that situation. So if there are multiple applicable fees, eight through 13, we would not say charge for a site plan review and a variance application. We would just pick the higher fee. And Erin had had a discussion, I think, with Chris about whether these should really be higher or not. And he was inclined to say, and correct me, Erin, if I'm wrong, but these are pretty much in the ballpark of what he felt our community could handle and what would be appropriate. I think the one thing that I felt strongly about and that Erin changed was on 14, the annexation disconnect fee. Our actual cost with Lyman Family Farms, number one up on the Comridge, was $4,500 for our actual cost. And so Erin changed it to varies with the situation. And I think that that's appropriate, unless we want to just plug in a number. But our actual cost, because we had to pay for publications and mapping and filing, and that kind of... and that even excluded the attorney's fees, which, as you remember, were donated to us by a resident. So that included... that excluded that attorney fee cost. So the actual out-of-pocket cost to do the work to disconnect or to annex will vary. But for Sloman Family Farms was $4,500. So tell me, let's talk about what people's thoughts are on this because we are down for a public hearing tonight. Anyone?
Yes, I'm ready if you'd like for me to speak, Mayor.
Sure, Brandt.
First glance, this looks really good. It's important that we charge for services that are made us to do work from outside people. So I agree with this fee schedule. And I like what we have in it so far.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is the zoning text amendment or the zoning map amendment, those kinds of amendments, is that $200 fee going to cover those? We've got an attorney fee usually if that occurs. Is that correct?
We have an attorney fee, but generally in these fee... in these types of fees, these are just out-of-pocket actual costs, not attorney's fees. Because if you look at these, almost all of these could incur attorney's fees. And we, you know, legally, we don't have to use an attorney. We can just do it ourselves. So these do not reflect attorney's fees.
Because I was also thinking, just, you know, with the cost of holding the public hearings and everything and multiple meetings.
Yeah. Yeah. It just is... I know it would be a process. We really haven't had to do that much. But my sense is we could get in pretty deep with that.
Well, remember that this is a resolution, so it can be changed very easily by just putting it on the agenda and talking about the fees. I don't think we have to hold a public hearing every time we adjust a fee.
Okay.
So this would be the starting point. I'll confirm that. But I'm... because it's a resolution and it's not an ordinance.
Yeah.
We don't need to hold a complete public hearing to say, well, the 200 is under assessed, so we want to go to 250.
So what are your words and your... and the conventional wisdom with regard to the municipal act annexation disconnection fee of 200 bucks? Is that...
That's why in the... in the second one that Erin put out, number 14 says varies actual cost. Because those costs are going to vary with the size and the location and the amount of work that we have to do in terms of providing a map and everything. Like I said, Lyman Family Farms, without attorney's fees, was $4,500.
Okay.
How do we...
Thank you.
How do we tell somebody that when they try to do an annexation or a disconnection, it's sort of an open-ended amount? It seems like there should be not more than or not less than.
And that's a good question. I had wondered the same thing. But the statute... this is... so what the law says is that the petitioner doesn't really have any costs and that it's really falls on the town. So it's our actual cost. So we could put in a dollar amount not to exceed 5,000. And then ask Chris if we can do it that way?
I think that's a good idea. Check that out a little bit and have an up to amount. I think that's a good idea.
Well, or at least a minimum amount.
So what are you thinking, Lou? What amount?
I don't know. It seems like it's kind of a major thing. So it seems like $1,000 is kind of minimal. But five thousand... put 5,000 and then reduced if fees are substantially less or something.
Okay. We can talk with Chris about how that language would work. But I think that that's a good idea. Other comments?
Which... I'm sorry. Which number was that that you're talking about?
That's number 14.
Okay.
Annexation or disconnection.
Got it. On the first one, I think it would be good to drop the word "commercial" from short-term rental. I think that confuses things.
What number...
Okay. Number one.
Okay. So just say, "short-term rental"?
Right.
Yeah, I agree. That's fair.
Then I want to draw everyone's attention to number 17, which is the Bluff Airport landing fees.
Ann, before you go there, can I just have another thought on that one Linda just talked about?
Sure.
So if I was reading this, it says a business license fee. And then underneath that, it says, "short-term rental permit." So do short-term rental people... I would assume you pay $25 a year for the business license and then another $25 a year for every unit of a short-term rental. Is that... is that correct?
Yes. That's what we've been doing.
And then the late fee is after a certain amount of time or something? None of these others have late fees?
Well, none of the others really apply for a late fee. We could put in 30 days after due. Or what's your proposal?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just curious.
Okay, we can put that in. All right, then.
And this is what occurred to me also. Excuse me. The short-term rental is a license. They get a license. That permit is kind of what they do when they initially get a...
Okay, so I can change that to license?
Yeah.
You know, as long as you're changing that particular item, it might be clearer to break it out into a separate number so that have five items under business fees rather than four. Because it's really separate from the business license.
Okay, so we just shift then all the numbering?
I think so, but others...
That makes sense to me.
For which one?
The commercial or the short-term rental permit would be a breakout of a new number.
That'll be number two or 1A.
And then would it have...
It would be two. It would be two and then three would be... yeah, there you go.
And then does it have a late fee as well? The same late fee?
Should have.
Yeah, it should have.
Because those are yearly... yearly...
We could say all late fees are $20 and just not... they don't get who's late for when. If they're late, you know, it gives us the latitude to add it.
Well, most of them are submitted with the application, like a land use or a subdivision. Those, like, they're not considered until the fees paid, I would assume. So I think these are the only yearly...
Right. They are.
The only yearly ones.
Okay.
Yep, those are the only ones. Then, number 17 on the Bluff Airport. Erin, why don't you talk about your conversation with Jim Hook on that?
Yeah. So 17, which is now 18 now that we made that little adjustment. I think for a lot of the other areas, we're either already charging the fee... or, excuse me, we're already charging fees for, like, facility rentals. Or we have all of the paperwork and forms that someone would fill out and it kind of goes hand in hand with now collecting a fee. When we go down to the airport, Jim and I are both a little concerned that we don't really have a process in place right now to collect anything except for hangar rentals, which of course are being assessed. But for landing fees and tie-down fees, and not to say that we're not going to do this, but we'll need the credit card processing system in place. And then we'll need either like a scheduling system or some additional communication tracking method in order to ensure that we are getting this information out. And so what I'd like to propose is that the landing fee and the tie-down fee, we still keep them for future. You know, those are two areas which fees will be assessed in the future. But I'd like the opportunity to get a really solid system in place first. So we are not setting ourselves up for just, you know, kind of being lax on fees. Like, oh, well, it's in our system, but we're not actually charging for it because we don't have the process set up yet. And so I think there are two areas that fees should be assessed. They're assessed at other airports. But I'd like to work closely with Jim first to make sure that we really understand how we're going to do it before it's on here.
Brandt, did you have your hand up?
Yes, ma'am. I like that idea of figuring out how to get it taken care of. We could leave it on there and just say, "free currently." You know, list the landing fee and airport fee and just have, you know, a zero on our fee schedule until we decide that we want to do that. Just an idea, whatever you think.
Linda?
I think a year is way too long. I mean, I could see six months maybe. But I'm already set up to do credit cards. I'm not set up with the bank. I'm set up with Polaris. But that part of it is pretty straightforward. And if we check with other airports, small airports, to see how they communicate this to their pilots, I think that would be helpful.
So Linda, when you say you're set up with credit cards, you have something that, like, online that, when we do motel reservations or something, there's a site, a connection where they can put their credit card in, say, from the airport, they can just punch it in and pay the 10 bucks and it'll go into our account? Is that...
No.
...by setup with a credit card? Or what would they have to do to pay you?
The part that I have in place is the accounting part on Polaris. So that part is in place. So I'm assuming that Brandt and I would need to go up to the bank to set up the credit card part.
Well, it would be a... it's something like an online booking thing where they take your credit card, you pay them fees, then they deposit it to the account. It's not really a banking thing. It's a credit card processor that needs to be set up.
Correct. Right. Erin and I talked about this yesterday, that I agree with Linda. I think a year is way too long. I think six months gives us adequate time to do it. And then we could put in "to be determined" next to those two as placeholders. But I think that Brandt and Linda will need to work with Zion to get all that set up. But what Linda's referring to is Polaris. It's already set up in the accounting system to be able to account for it on our end. It will be the actual physical setup with the bank.
Well, it's the actual physical part with from a phone, logging in on your phone and being able to pay somebody. They can't walk into the office or anything. You know, that's the part that I think is tricky.
No, I think we need to get a credit card machine in the office so people can actually come into the office. And I think that's part of our strategic plan in step one, is to talk about setting up all this electronic payment stuff so that we've got it set up.
Yeah. And there'd be a link on the site, on our website, that you go to Bluff website, go in there, access the pay online, all of that. So if you can get that set up, that'll speed up a lot of the holdup, I think.
So Erin had her hand up. Erin?
Did I have my hand up?
Okay, Jim.
Unless I'm misunderstanding the concerns of Erin and Jim, it sounds like there's a simply, you know, how do we know when to tap somebody on the shoulder and tell them they owe us 20 bucks? And I don't know anything about these processes, but I believe people have to file a flight plan. And if that is accessible to the airport manager, then he would expect somebody to be coming in and probably who it is. So I don't know anything about the flight plans, but I do know that they need to file... they should file a flight plan, I think, by law. So that's one way to know when somebody's coming in and actually tap them on the shoulder and say, you have some fees here. Anyway, you could look into that. Thank you.
Brandt?
I was trying to picture me flying in with an airplane and trying to pay a fee. And it seems to me, if as an interim step, we could have a sign there that says, here's our airport fees. Just call this number with your credit card and pay. And then we'll just have to do honor system until, you know, we get a little further advanced, it seems. But that's just me trying to think through being a pilot and flying in. I wouldn't want to come to an office and meet anybody or any of that stuff. So it needs to be off your cell phone, I think.
Well, I think that that's why this is a piece that we just set aside for the purposes of today in our public hearing, put in "to be determined." Okay, I'm getting a lot of echo.
That sounds good.
And then we do that as a part of our strategic planning meeting, our first one, where we start walking through our plan. That's a part of it. Yep. Is everybody okay with doing that for right now? And then we'll get back to that piece very...
Yeah. I just want to make sure our airport manager and everybody signs off on this idea too. So, because they do so much for us.
Well, that's why we're doing the public hearing tonight, Brandt. And then we will be voting on the final draft of the resolution.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or concerns on this? Because this is what we will be posting for tonight's public hearing at 5:30 for public comment.
A quick question. For the hangar rental, are all the hangars the same rate? Or should this just be like per contract?
They're... Linda, they're all the same rate, aren't they?
Yes.
So we could just plug in that dollar amount? Do you know what that is right offhand?
It is $1,000 a year plus a 4% increase after the first year. On... So 4% increase every year after that. Oh, yeah, $1,000 a year.
And actually, that hangar rental could have a late fee attached to it because they all go out at the same time.
You want the same late fee of $20?
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, and then we can... like I said, we'll be talking about this in the public hearing to see if we get public comment or any thoughts after we leave this meeting, bring them back to that, and then we can move this along. Anything else on this?
I just have one comment that with all these fees in our electronic world, we probably need to have something like this that they can pay online. Even a hangar fee, the community center fees, all that. Because to coordinate with somebody in person and have a credit card machine right in the office and so on is just a kind of a complication that doesn't... probably need to be there. So it probably needs to be an outside entity, but those costs, that cost. So, you know, you have to kind of weigh how much you're bringing in. If you want just checks or if you want to try to do credit cards, those all costs.
And that's a big part of the strategic planning piece that we need to talk about. I think we probably, each of us have a little different idea, but that's the strategic planning because we have to look at the electronic banking and getting this stuff into this century. So anything else on this? Or are we good for tonight to have the public hearing? Okay. Then we move to the review of the strategic plan and the implementation of stage one. And then to... included with that is Hathaway's proposal to work with us to get this up and running, this actual plan in use. So thoughts or changes on the strategic plan? Or are we all good? Or are there some further changes we need to make? Because this will be what we're voting on.
I like it. I like the continuing work they're going to do with us. I'm in favor of it.
On the plan itself, are there any other changes? Otherwise, this will be the plan that we're voting on tonight. And this would be the point to raise any concerns or questions that we have.
I have just a comment that I received an inquiry from a citizen as to whether this strategic plan is aligned with or coincident with the other initiative and all other initiatives that we have. And I really haven't seen anything that's in conflict with anything else we're doing. But I'm just wondering if there's any other comments on that.
It's in line with our general plan and it's in line with all of the work that we did. I don't know what that other initiative might be that somebody's concerned about.
Transportation.
Well, there haven't been any concerns raised to the council about it.
Okay.
Since we're the approving body, I would say we're either going to approve it or we're going to hold it up again.
Great. I just... I was just... wanted to make sure. That's my sense, too. I just wanted to make sure everybody else felt that way, too. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I had... we had a few edits and I don't know if the edits got incorporated. I assume they did. And I don't have my list in front of me, but...
So Luann, I made most of like little grammatical stuff or like references to the 2019 plan. Those have been added.
Okay.
There was one section that you brought up regarding enforcement and essentially this idea of like encouraging neighbors, empowering neighbors to be able to talk to neighbors about issues. And so that particular discussion with the elected official or the group who was working on that section was held essentially because, A, we're a small municipality. We don't have a lot of bandwidth internally currently. Like clearly, enforcement is going to ramp up over time. We'll have more people, part of the organization. But the idea of including that, you know, essentially saying, you know, have you had a polite conversation with your neighbor? We're not trying to sic neighbors on neighbors, but just, hey, is this something that you've brought to your neighbor's attention in a polite way before you come and run to town council or run to the mayor and complain about the issue? So essentially, is your neighbor even aware that they have created... that, you know, they're going and gets the ordinance? So it's not supposed to be this like band of vigilante people who are just like, you know, attacking neighbors. But really, this idea of we have limited human resources as a part of our organization. Let's make sure that neighbors are aware in a polite way. Now, granted, that's not going to be every situation. There are going to be situations in which the council needs to step in or whatever our enforcing body needs to step in. But really, the idea was, you know, have you had a polite conversation with your neighbor already? Yes, okay. And they haven't done anything? Or no. And then, you know, being able to provide the resources to have that be a friendly interaction.
I think, too, to add to that is, as a part of the strategic plan, the group talked about building in a mediation format within our structure so that we would get a trained mediator to be able to resolve some of these questions and be able to work with people. And having... I was a licensed mediator in Minnesota and the first rule of mediation is getting people to talk. So it's a logical step. If did you talk to your neighbors? If not, are you afraid of your neighbor? Because then you don't use mediation, but you also don't force people to talk. But, you know, in this community, it's important that people have a conversation if they can do it, and that's why it was in there.
Well, I strongly disagree with that. You will not find a sheriff's department, a police department anywhere that will tell you to do that.
And that's...
It's a problem.
Yep. Okay. So if you disagree, what we can do is have that discussion because we can vote on that. But we can't do that here. So let's mark that as an issue to vote on and see.
Yeah. Because if you can get San Juan County Sheriff's Office to say that that's a good idea or Blanding Police Department or any department to tell you that the best way to solve a problem that the town has written as an ordinance is to have that neighbor approach, the neighbor that is violating an ordinance, say it's a lighting thing or a noise thing or whatever it might be. There is nobody that's going to recommend that we set up our town plan in that way. That... and like I said in my email, that's keeping Bluff Bluff. We've had the Painted Horn, which is, was Comridge eat and drink? There was a person that lived there. There was a person that lived at Lester's Corner. They all... they would shoot across the highway at each other. That's why Bluff has the reputation that it has for not being very civilized. So we want to be able to have people say, hey, there's a rule now. We've made the town. We've made this... we've created this entity. When I have a problem, all I need to do is submit it to the town. And they say, oh, yes, this is a rule. Then the town... this is a rule. Then the town goes to that person and says, hey, you know, you might not be aware, but there's actually a light ordinance, and we need you to turn your lights off at night, or hey, you need to keep your dog in, or hey, you're speeding up and down the road, or whatever the complaint is, if we have a law against it. If we don't, we just listen, and that's usually enough. People can vent and be done, but you don't sic them on the neighbor. That creates bad community, bad community, safe conditions. It's, I can't leave that in there. That's awful.
Okay, so what, Erin, what page is that on? And we'll highlight that for tonight, and everybody give that some thought. I would respectfully disagree with you on that, Lou, so let's get this on for a vote tonight. I don't want to hold up the strategic plan approval any further than tonight. So...
Page nine, under short-term actions.
Okay, great.
Yes, I'm just suggesting it be taken out. That's why we've written laws and why we, we are the people that need to contact the community, not, don't, don't pawn that responsibility off onto somebody else. Don't say, oh, no, no, that's your problem, you talk to them. Not at all. We need to take that responsibility, write them a polite letter, call them on the phone, whatever. We do not want neighbors against neighbors on behalf of our rules.
Okay, and we can have that discussion tonight about who fills what, and put it on for a vote if, if there's a vote. That's easier.
But it's, that's what a work session is for, is to discuss these kinds of things.
It is, but we can't vote on it.
No, but we can kind of come to a, you know, have a discussion time.
Okay, so I would leave it in. Anybody else? Do you want to weigh in on some consensus?
I, I, to some extent, I agree with Lou, Erin, but to attribute Bluff's reputation to those, there's a lot of echo on my voice. I don't know if you guys are getting, but at the time that that occurred, there was a sheriff living in town that really refused on several occasions to write any kind of a report when there were infractions. And, and he just really refused to enforce some things. And I know that because I personally was involved in one. But I think that that, that's not a very representative example of why we should, should do this. So I don't want to get carried away on this, but I see, I see the good, I see, I, you know, I see the fairness in both, both sides of this, but I don't think the example that Luanne used is quite, quite applicable. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I think...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Linda.
You know, for this kind of thing, there's a tendency for some people to want to go straight to the, the enforcement part, instead of trying different things first. So, yeah, I agree that it should stay.
Brandt, you had your hand up.
You know, I'm worried about language that would, that would empower someone to harass their neighbor like Lou is, you know, and, and I just say that, it's kind of thinking about the extreme point of, of that. So I don't want any language that really directs people into some kind of vigilante-type move. That's what I'm mainly concerned about. On the other hand, the first thing you do when you have a problem really is you got to live next door, you got to talk to them. So, so, you know, so I don't know how to word it for that intent.
So if everybody looks at what is highlighted, draft guidance to encourage residents, that means we will be going back, we would be going back to this in our strategic planning to look at this. And so the concerns about, that Brandt just talked about, it says draft. Work, it just doesn't lay out, you must do A, B, C, and D. It just says draft guidance. Okay, so Lou, did you have your hand up? And then I'm going to suggest we move everything else, move this conversation to the meeting tonight.
Yeah, and I appreciate you pointing out that part of the sentence. It says, let's draw up something that either encourages or not encourages, lets them know how they deal with their situation. So I appreciate that, that it doesn't, it's, it's asking that we do, not that we suggest that, that that's how they do it. And as far as that incident, that is an extreme one, where you have firearms across the highway and so on. But in, since we've been a town, we've had situations that have led to the police and have led to arrests because of interactions between neighbors. And so it's not just in the past, it's been in the recent past. And I'm not, to protect privacy, I'm not going to go into who and what, but it is a current problem.
And again, if you want to have examples up here on the sand dune, there have been three or four incidents where people have talked to each other and resolved it. And it's polite, respectful.
And there's no saying you can't do that.
Right. We don't want to belabor this because we're going to do it again tonight. So, as everybody's spoken, Erin, did you have something? And then let's move to the next item.
My final piece, just in, someone who helped craft this portion of the plan, was the idea was we needed multiple facets of resolution. And so it's not just going to jump, the, the purpose was it's not just supposed to jump to our lawyer writing someone a letter. It's going to say, hey, we've got, and of course, there are going to be severe situations where that, you know, we're going to have to bring in the big guns, figuratively, please. But I think the, the purpose of the idea was there are going to be multiple facets to, to make sure people have the resources they need to address the issue. So that, that really was the purpose. So I think definitely, you know, take a look at the language, and perhaps there's part of the language that could be modified to, to encompass what we've talked about today, that maybe sounds a little less harsh for the plan, that line.
Good. First player.
So just everybody, before we move to the next item on the agenda, can everyone just be sure you reviewed Pathway's strategic plan, next step? It's $2,000 for a time period to help us have kind of periodic check-ins, but we might want to think about the dates that we're using for the start and the end of that, considering that we have two new council members coming on. So that'll be one of the points we want to talk about. So it starts in November, it would start in November, which might be the perfect time after the election, and we know who the two new council people are, before the two departing council members go. So let's talk about that tonight and see if we've got a vote on that. And don't let me forget to bring it for a vote, because I tended to do that, flip over the vote. All right, then if there's nothing else, we'll move to number three. Discussion of Bluff Water Works and preliminary conversation on the merger of Bluff Water Works into the town of Bluff as a water department. Just very briefly, Linda and I attend the Bluff Water Works meetings, and the last six months, eight months have been kind of an ongoing thread of conversation with Bluff Water Works about how this process is going to work. And certainly, we haven't come to a consensus on how this is going to work, but I think that Bluff Water Works is waiting for the town to take the first step to say, this is how we envision doing it. And clearly, one 10-minute conversation in a work session isn't going to do it, but Bluff Water Works meets tomorrow night, and I really would like to give a report about, do we have even a beginning idea of how we want to do that move? Keeping in mind that we will need, as a town, to be able to have trained folks to do the actual delivery and maintenance and all of that. And there's the billing and any type of record-keeping piece. So it's not a, it's not something where we can say just Bluff Water Works move in and be the same people. Some of those people on the Bluff Water Works are not going to want to remain on in a department sense. And so that's kind of the starting point. What, what do we want to do, and how do we want to approach it? So thoughts? Brandt, and then Jim?
Jim, if you want to go first, I don't mind going second.
I recommend we nominate a steering committee composed of two, at least one, but better to have two members of the council, and a, two members of the community. Hopefully, both would be from the water, BWW. And a four-person group would then explore this and come up with a process for completing this. Not, not in a speedy manner that would, you know, that would overlook some, some details, but certainly something that would be expedient. I mean, if this is something that needs to be done, it, then we need to do it. And I think a steering committee is probably a pacific, a peaceful way to do it, maybe. Thank you.
Brandt?
I like Jim's idea of, of getting a working group together. It's kind of that right now with you and Linda. We have our reps sort of. But I'm really excited to hear that we're going to go down this path. I think it's the right thing for Bluff, and so thanks to the Water Board for, for doing this, and, and the town, and I look forward to trying to make this happen. I think the best way to maybe proceed is to find out who would like to continue working once the town's created, either as a contractor independently, and then we can kind of see what positions we'll need to plan for.
Lou, did you have something?
I just would agree that it's, was one of the main reasons that we incorporated, and so let's, you know, let's get them moved over. I would hope that a couple of them from the current BWW would help to do this. I think Sayer's idea of making a committee, a steering committee, is the way to do it. And that, that becomes another one of our committees that meets regularly, gets some ideas going, and, and it was part of our strategic plan to get that going. So they may be helpful in this one. This is probably our biggest change, so maybe we can use them to help us get this accomplished. But steering committee's the way to go, I, I believe.
Erin, did you have something?
Yeah, so certainly, I agree, needs to have focus from both sides of the table. I really want that committee to be able to focus on what the organizing structure looks like. So in terms of hierarchy, who's going to report to who? Certainly, I know, you know, that's an area in which, you know, we were kind of going to be creating an enterprise fund, and that's going to be new for us. And so there's, there's a lot that's going to go into that, but I definitely want to make sure, given, you know, we, we kind of know how Bluff Water Works operates currently in, in a board, but that structure will probably look a little different once it comes under, under the town. And, you know, we've got the roads department, there's some policies and procedures there that we're going to continue to flesh out. But this is a really great opportunity for us to understand, you know, as cleanly as possible, what do those hierarchies look like? And I, I agree with what's already been said, you know, trying to get an early sense of, are there members of Bluff Water Works who would be willing to come into the town? And if there aren't, we can start that process of ensuring that we have the right human capital, as well as capital, to bring this, bring this group in.
Lou?
Yeah, and I really like the way Erin is starting it, is by getting the, the plan in place, you know, the, the little timeline thing, so that we can see who, you know, how it fits into our department. Because it'll be a department, and, and like she said, all the hierarchy, who reports to who, how it gets recorded, Linda can get it in her bookkeeping. We can get all of that set up, and as that is set up, that will inspire more interest in it, like who could do the work, who we need to hire out to. In the meantime, what you have to realize is that there are, what, five guys on there? Couple of them do, Marx does the majority of the footwork on things and repairs, and knows the majority of the information. So we need to work on getting that sort of thing transferred, regardless of the actual person who fills that job. Because it's, it's not rocket science, so there's a lot of, lot of people that, that can move in, but we're not ready for them to move in. They're, they're set right now, but tomorrow could be that day that they will be looking for somebody else. So it's, it's always, when you have people involved, it's always a, a process of when is that going to happen? But we can be doing all of that other setup, and then, and get it established that we have a water department, and then move those people and that system over, and the accounting and all the rest. I think that's an excellent way to start.
So this should be something that we, when we set our meeting to do our first piece of the strategic plan, this should be one of those integral parts that we start laying out, and then figuring out who wants to be on, do we want a steering committee? Who would be on it, and how does it work? You know, just to, to be perfectly clear, during the conversations that I've had with Marx Powell, I think both he and I have the sense of, we're aging out. When you look at BWW and you look at our town council, we need to be able to have this set up so that it's a smooth transition. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen tomorrow. But also, some of us are older than others, quite frankly. And like Lou said, it, it could be that tomorrow, three of the five of either team are no longer working. So we'll talk about that strategic planning, and this should be obviously one of those first steps that we work on, is tomorrow night, when I go to BWW, I'll just update them that we've got some suggestions. We'll be setting the strategic plan meeting to be more detailed, and if they'd like to join that, that's probably a good time to start.
And, and I just want to say that regardless of all of our ages, that the same thing happens with young people. They get another offer, they fall in love, whatever. You know, they're, they're off and doing other things. So you, you've just got to have the system in place.
Right.
And have the maps, have, you know, know what we've got, and then plug in people as we need them.
Yep. All right, so that's what I'll report back on, and then we can move to number four, discussion of the election and voting, allocation of duties. Well, I guess, just jumping into it, we have a primary set for September 5th, and one of our candidates has withdrawn. So we are down to four, which Erin and I have reason to believe would mean we would not have a primary. However, we have not been able to confirm that yet. But if we don't have a primary, then we move directly to the general. I'm going to turn this over to Erin, because I think she has a little more detail about the mail. Well, what I can say is it is all mail-in, with the exception of the day of the voting, where there'll be in-person voting. There will not be any early voting for the primary. If we have a primary, you'll get your ballot in the mail, you'll be able to vote, or you can come in to the community center for the primary, if we have one, on the day of September 5th. So Erin, any updates or additions to this?
I will just say that we have been working very diligently to try to contact the county to understand how this would impact us. This particular candidate has, had reached out earlier, but had not confirmed that they were withdrawing up until yesterday. And that's when I received the written affidavit, which is what we needed to make it official. So I would have to assume, and I know what they say about assuming, I have to assume that the ballots are printed. San Juan County does have, you know, I found it even on the state elections website, they have the jurisdiction to mail out ballots earlier than August 15th, which was the date for the rest of the state to mail out ballots. So I, I have no idea if those ballots have been mailed yet. I do have a call-in to the state elections director, and I had to place that just before this meeting, so I haven't heard back from, from them either. So all this to say, we don't have a ton of information. I would be under the, the premise, though... we don't have a ton of information. I would be under the premise, though, that four candidates are going to move on, whether we have the election or not, the primary election or not. So then that just leads us to the general election, which is taking place on November 24. As a reminder, that is same day, or same week as Thanksgiving. And so that in of itself is going to probably, and the state has acknowledged, create some issues. Ann and I are also looking to get some information as to exactly what canvassing will entail, because the municipality will need to canvas. But we don't have a whole lot of information yet about what those responsibilities are, and the timeframe in which, or I mean, we know the timeframe, but we don't know how long it'll actually take for a municipality of our size to complete that process.
So tagging up the canvassing, this is something that the town of Bluff has not had to do. This has always been included in our payment for, in our election agreement with San Juan County to run our elections. And so I need to figure out what canvassing looks like. It's generally, well, it's done after the date of voting. And there's a time period, and then counting the votes, and then approving the final tally to send up to the state. So my concern, and why I have this work session of allocation of duties, is we can't get to that week, and then have this discussion about who's going to be in town the week of or the week after, to be able to do the canvassing. So we're not going to probably be able to make any hard decisions tonight, which I had hoped we'd be able to talk about scheduling. But we don't have all the information we need, and most likely we'll go on to the next agenda. So be thinking about what your plans are for the week of Thanksgiving, and the weeks, the two weeks following. I think there's 10 business days to canvas. Again, we've never done this, so it's a work in progress. Okay, Lou, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so going backwards, on the scheduling, I know they switched it to the box watchers, can't be elected officials, but can elected officials count the ballots?
They have to.
Yeah, so that's just something that's beyond our control, and seems a little odd to me. But, okay, we'll let that one go. And then with this primary, probably can't save the printing costs, but maybe you can save the mailing costs if it's not gone out. And then I was also wondering who we have as the remaining candidates.
Okay, so the person who dropped out was Mike Yarris. So the remaining candidates are Wesley Shook, Britt Hornsby, Gary Lichtenstein, and, okay.
Jen Davila.
Jen Davila. And so, as you may remember, the election prior to this, we had a similar situation where someone dropped out. At the point that I, my understanding from the Lieutenant Governor's office last time around, at the point that we approved the ballot, which has been done, all of our costs are incurred for that primary, period. Because it is too difficult for, it's too difficult, too time-consuming, and too crazy-making to sort out each municipalities or counties' obligation as to what the cost is. So it's a hard and fast thing with the Lieutenant Governor's Office that I was told last time. Once you approve that ballot, it's not whether it's mailed, it's not whether it's printed, it's not the clerk's time, it's a done deal, that's the agreement, and that's what we'll pay. Now, that being said, Erin and I fully intend to try to limit the costs. But that's what I was told last time around, and that's what I'm anticipating. So anything else on that, Lou?
No, that's fine. And, yeah, that's fine. Could cause some confusion, but it doesn't really matter, except that if we have the primary, you know how, I guess you still have the general, even if the primary, if two of them win, landslide wins, and the primary doesn't matter, we'll still have a general.
No. And there most likely will not be any voting, but that doesn't mean people won't get a ballot. That's what happened last time. People got the ballot, even though there was no primary, and people voted. And then the elections officials in San Juan County actually counted votes and released them. And they should never have done that, according to the Lieutenant Governor.
Okay, so this time, they won't, we won't canvas the primary, and there won't be any release of what the numbers were.
That's why we're trying, that's why we're trying to get a hold of the state now, because we're not getting a response from San Juan County. Brandt?
Am I, did you say that the election is the week of Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Yeah, the election is the 21st of November.
It's not the second Tuesday in November, like it always is.
No, nor is it like the rest of the country.
You know, this is the kind of crap that drives me crazy. It's these kind of stupid decisions like this. And I want to just say that all the people traveling for Thanksgiving are going to be inconvenienced by this crazy-ass idea.
I would not disagree with you. And Utah League of Cities and Towns, thank you very much, took a very quick, very fast stance against doing this change for one year, for one set of elections, for one state. And they lost it on that. So we can thank Utah League for standing up for us, because they basically had the same sense, don't do it.
Well, in the same vein, they also set the primary for the week of Labor Day. So there really wasn't much thought in general, it seems.
There was thought, it was thought out well to influence the election. We ought to call the Department of Justice.
Okay, so as soon as Erin and I get updates, we will let everybody know. But please look at your calendars. And we are paying San Juan County to run our election. The agreement that I signed is the same agreement we've signed in the past, with the exception of the canvassing. And I'm going to put some real strong pressure on that office to do the canvassing. But I don't think we can do anything about the cost on the primary. So let's just see where we are tonight. Hopefully, we'll have some answers.
And then just to confirm, that's the 21st, which is the Tuesday. The 23rd is Thanksgiving, which is a Thursday before the end of the month. So it is early, Thanksgiving is early. And we'll all be mail-in. So nobody has to, like, go to the poll. It'll mostly be the hassle amongst us trying to count them.
Correct. But we will still have a voting box here on that day. It's mail-in, but the day of voting, we will still have a box.
Okay.
So people can vote in person. There are people who want to vote in person, which makes it even more honorous situation that this was moved.
Okay. I didn't realize we still had to have a box. All right, thank you.
And just a reminder, we are under, we, meaning the county, is under a federal voting order. We don't get to control anything as a municipality, or even as a county. These are controlled by the federal lawsuit on redistricting. There's an order out there that tells us how things are going to happen. So this is not where we, we have a lot of choice on some pieces of it. Okay, let's go to number five, a discussion of noxious weed resolution, which is number 56 of our resolutions, and how do we turn it into an ordinance with enforcement? And yes, we sent out, probably a month ago, the, a couple samples of ordinances. So I don't know if people recall any of this at this point, since we've had a couple of... So this is our resolution. And based on Luanne's work with the Discovery Group to get some grant funds, we really need to have a resol, or an ordinance that has teeth in it. And this really doesn't have strong language. So thoughts?
What's the object? What's that?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can start this. So I looked up the, part of when I did that interview with the Clean Energy People, one of the, I can't remember his name, Polides, but that was, Blanding Town Council at some point is on that board. And he asked what our ordinance was and what our resolution was. So that started it, because I knew we had something. But it was a resolution, not an ordinance. And then the state requires that everybody, municipalities, counties, everybody has to comply with the state ordinance. So we don't have any choice but to enforce stuff for noxious weeds. And so the only one that we have that is on that high alert is the giant cane. So all the others are, they're on control-type things, like the napweed, Russian olive, the goat heads, all those are on control them. Let's keep them controlled. But the giant cane is under eradicate status. So there's not very much of it in the state, and they want every single piece of it gone. And that's a state law that says that we have to enforce that. So we have ornamental plantings in town. So far, we don't have any escapees out to the river bottom, but they want all of them in town eradicated. So in order to do that, you know, having these groups come in, I'm pretty sure we got that award, but the one in charge has been on vacation. So the Discovery Center got an award, and I think we were the only ones that they applied for. But they've been communicating directly with them, so we'll find out in a couple days, probably. But when they come to town, it really puts the, you know, the awareness, the education out to the community. We have a couple people that would just soon, you know, keep planting it. But for the most part, we have total participation. And people sign up to get the help to get it out. So, but what we need is, if you're not going to cooperatively do it, then the town is mandated by the state to go in and take it out for them, and then give them the cost of doing that. So then that has to be attached to their taxes somehow. So you, you know, you do all the process, just like the other. You let them know that this is a rule. You let them know that they have some growing in their yard or on their land. And then you take that to the, you know, talk to them, see if they want help. And then if they don't want help, we're supposed to go in and remove it. Now, we have a whole bunch to do that are cooperative first, and we'll narrow it down, hopefully, to nobody by the end. But that's what we need to have in an ordinance, so that we can do that if need be.
Thoughts?
It sounds like talking to your neighbors to me, you know? Let me just talk about that again. But I would think we would keep the eradication process moving again this year. I know there are people that like the Red Oak for shade. I have a friend of mine who likes hers. But I'm pretty confused about enforcement, or the language of the ordinance, really.
So generally speaking, how it works for this type of thing, is that there'd be an ordinance that says, excuse me, an ordinance that says, it's your obligation to take care of these things, they must be eradicated. If you fail to eradicate it, then the council will send you a letter. Then you're given X amount of time to cure that. And if you don't cure that, then the next step would be for the town to hire someone to remove it for you. And then you can have a process to attach it to a property tax bill, or an invoice, or however you want to collect the payment for the cost of doing it. It's a pretty standard, acceptable way of addressing property kinds of issues. And, you know, like, if you live in a big city, a lot of those things are just, you get the citation telling, the letter telling you to cut it back. Next thing is the citation. Next step is they cut it down. Then you get the bill.
That process sounds fine to me. You know, a friendly, let's get it out of here type thing. And then you just got to increase the severity of the situation. So I'm good with that.
And I think what we could do to simplify it is just turn it over to Chris to write and say, you know, give us the generic fix that most municipalities use for dealing with property issues. And then we could look at that and see how we want to fine-tune it. Jim, did you have something?
No, I'm discussing something else. I'm sorry.
We're working ahead. Sorry.
We're working on it. Thank you.
There may be another pest that rears its head in the future that will have to do that. So we should make it a standard-type form for, you know, 2023 situation, that we can apply to '24 and '25 down the road.
Yeah, I can, I can think of one thing that we, that the town has had some complaints on, and that's properties that are owned by folks where there's a lot of obvious garbage and debris. And so that's kind of handled the same way. But I can ask Chris to fine-tune this, and we can look at it for the noxious weeds, and figure out what we want to do, and use that kind of as a stepping stone for the next, if we feel there's another problem that we need to address.
FYI, weeds, goat heads are starting to pop up after the 90-degree, 100-degree heat and rain. So everybody, check your yard for goat heads.
Yes. Much easier to get right now, and you can just kick them out of the way, and you don't have to collect them.
Oh, you got to scrape them now, till they seed.
Yeah, good. And, yeah, and back to just the comment of letting your neighbors know. I mean, some people don't even know what it is or what it looks like. But we're such a small town, and I think most everybody does now. But those, having those groups in and offering help to people, so that it doesn't cost them a penny to get it out of the yards, all of that is, has already started with education and help and cooperation and whatnot. It's just, if there's somebody that insists they're going to keep one that is on the eradication list, that's where we have to step in.
If we could send out a notice before they come, just say we got free eradication services available for you. Just get up with us. And I think that's a great way to approach it.
Yep, we'll do it. Hopefully, they got the award for this project. We'll see.
It'd be nice to know. And thanks for working on that, Lou. That's really helpful. All right, then, number six, discussion of a resolution to be presented to San Juan County Commission. This came up in my discussions with our attorney about the disconnect, the Acton disconnect, which as proposed is 9,500 and some acres. And what our attorney suggested, and he drafted for us a resolution, that we would take the San Juan County Commission and ask them to, the bottom line, support our boundaries, support our incorporated boundaries as they are. If that disconnect occurs as proposed by the petitioners, these would, these properties would immediately revert to the county. And so it was Chris's suggestion to take this to San Juan County, excuse me, man, these fires are getting to my throat, all the smoke stuff. On the resolution, what my thought would be, and the reason it's on the work session today, is to get everybody's input. And then we have Commissioner Harvey coming in today for our public hearing and meeting. And to sit down and talk with him about that. He'll be coming a little early, and I thought I'd run it by. I don't think it's a good idea, and I'm hoping everyone agrees, I don't think it's a good idea just to try to pop this on the commission without a conversation with the commissioner. And it has to go through that county administrator anyway. So I think it's a good time tonight to talk to him and to, Mr., to Commissioner Harvey about what is the general consensus? Or have they even talked about this? And can we ask for their support?
We need to ask for his support. That's correct. And great idea.
So thoughts on this? Lou, Linda, Jim?
Just a spelling, just a spelling issue in the, in the second to the last whereas. There's a T on the end of brought, but everything looks good to me.
Second to the last whereas.
Share my screen.
Oh, I see.
That was our little working ahead. Sorry.
That's okay. All right. Well, if everyone is okay with my running it by Commissioner Harvey today, and then what we'd want to do is get it on a commission meeting, if we feel like we have some support, or even if we feel like we don't have support, do we want to ask to get on the commission meeting, since this is a fairly important issue to the town of Bluff? So...
I think we should try to get on the commission meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll start with Commissioner We'll start with Commissioner Harvey today, and I'm sure he'll be thrilled to have to attend his work session, his meeting, our, our public hearing and our meeting. So, yeah, so he'll be there tonight, I hope around 5 o'clock for a few-minute early meet and greet, and then 5:30 for our public hearing. Definitely, he's coming to our regular meeting.
And we, and we'll be able to stream, we definitely want people in person, but the work, the public hearing and the general meeting will be held in the auditorium as well as virtually, so we'll have a full hybrid setup. Thank you, Craig.
Yes, thank you. All right, is there any other?
Motion to adjourn.
It's 11:42.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll take, treat that as a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I'm logging off. Thank you.